Are we good here?
Where do you need them?
Yeah.
So there's also no rec room does.
Yeah, the fifth graders write, produce, edit, everything for our daily news program. And so we like to ask members of the community and the district, the VIP guests, we call them, for the pledge, since we do it every day anyway, and kids get really excited about it.
We're more than happy to speak.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with Roqueal Lucy if you could establish a quorum.
Keith Harbison.
Here.
Rich Barton.
Here.
Jeff Snyder.
Here.
Dan Swires.
Here.
Stephanie Tippett.
Here.
We've got a quorum.
Thank you Lucy. First item of business is to amend or adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Alright, we get started off with recognition is always the fun part of the meeting, so we'll turn it to Dr. Kaden.
Well, sure, I appreciate President Snyder's research on this topic. So we've discovered that the last 12 years, four of the state fair queens have been Warren County R3 graduates. And a big influence on that has been our FFA program. And so we'd like to recognize our FFA program for all the hard work they do to help and support not only the queen candidates, but all the students, but really want to celebrate the results that we've received from the four state fair queens in the last 12 years. So if you guys wouldn't come up, we'll get a picture and have some things to recognize you with. So thank you guys for all that you do.
Okay. You guys ready? Good job. I guess before moving to the next item of business, I did want to add that when we were at the state fair, working with some of the different things with the state fair queen, one of the directors of the state fair actually, when we introduced ourselves, he said, "I do have to ask the question, what is in the water in Morton?" That we've had so many fair queens, so that was pretty cool. Alright, Lucy, do you have any patron comments? Moving on to superintendent reports, we will start with curriculum.
Yes, so we have our curriculum coordinators here, Dr. Strunk, Ms. Dildine to give us update on curriculum.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Strunk. Oh, sorry Lucy. Well, my name is Carrie Strunk. I am the district math and science curriculum coordinator, and this is Gina Dildine. She is the district ELA and social studies curriculum coordinator. And we just wanted to thank you again for allowing us to come in every year just to highlight the Warren County R3 curriculum program and all the amazing work that the members of our curriculum team have accomplished this past year. So for those that are new to the board, first of all, welcome. As your district curriculum coordinators, as you can see on this slide, Gina and I wear many hats in the district, so we're kind of all over the place.
Alright, we want to start off by reviewing our current board adopted curriculum writing plan and process. This year, all elementary content areas will meet quarterly, which are ELA, math, and library. The secondary content areas will also meet quarterly, which again are ELA, math, and library. We don't meet with any more than four representatives at a time, and we prefer to utilize curriculum writers from years past if possible, but we also welcome new members to the team. These curriculum teams will be responsible for evaluating, writing, reviewing, revising, renewing, and facilitating the implementation of the curriculum, instructional methods, activities, and assessments. It is important to note that we are developing new curriculum. When we develop new curriculum, we make sure it's aligned to Missouri learning standards and the AP courses at the high school are aligned to the college board AP standards and state standards. Everything that we create and evaluate during the curriculum writing process always encompasses our district C-CIP goals. Goal number two, to have 75% of our students in grades K through eight reading on or above grade level for achieving one year's worth of reading growth. And goal three, to increase and/or maintain five out of eight math courses to meet or exceed state math index scores. And then we also focus on goal one, in an effort to increase parental engagement, the district will develop a consistent academic platform so that parents can hold their students accountable.
On this slide is an example of our six-year curriculum writing and purchasing cycle. As you can see, this year, we will be meeting with English Language Arts and library groups. We're going to revise the curriculum and review resources that we created six years ago. One of our goals is to always make sure our district curriculum is easily accessible and user-friendly, especially for our new teachers to the district and new teachers to a grade level or to a new course. Because of this, we created the Warren County R3 Curriculum Share Drive for our teachers. Our share drive is a Google Drive that is shared through the district and is a source for our grade level common assessments, instructional resources, and our district curriculum. On this slide, you're going to see an example of one of our unit frameworks. Once teachers access this drive, they're going to find their content area and grade level, and then they're going to locate their teaching unit that they want to teach. Every unit consists of a unit framework. And in this slide, you're going to see an example of what each unit framework consists of in hopes that a teacher will have access to everything that they need to teach a unit successfully.
Alright, in an effort to be transparent with the curriculum we are providing in our district, parents have full access to our district curriculum through the Warren County R3 website. Parents can view the spoken sequences, standards addressed in each unit, essential questions, and unit overviews.
We also wanted to share some highlights from the 24-25 school year. Last year, our curriculum teams created 411 new learning units for math, ELA, fine arts, practical arts, and high school electives. We continue to develop and build common assessments in Canvas for second through 12th grade students. We also purchased new fine arts resources for K-12 classrooms, and then we also purchased new practical arts resources for the 6-12 classrooms. We also continue to develop the district academic dashboard that syncs Canvas assessment data to Infinite Campus. A huge responsibility of our team is to make sure that all new teachers to the district are trained and prepared for the first day of school. So this year, we offered a variety of professional development opportunities to prepare our new and returning teachers. So for example, we had the Science of Learning PD this July. We had three Canvas LMS PD opportunities, MySci training for K-8 teachers, elementary ELA PD, elementary UFLI PD, and then Singapore Math and Model Drawing Training for K-8 teachers, all before the first day of school. Any questions?
UFLI?
UFLI is the University, or yeah, the University of Florida Literacy Institute. It's the new phonics and phonetic awareness curriculum that the grades K through two are implementing this year.
And when the parents can access this, that's all they can do is just read and they go ahead?
Right, they cannot edit, yes, yeah, they just.
Do teachers have that access to do that, or do they fully do?
So the curriculum writers, when they're on our teams, then we open it up for editing rights when they're in with us in our curriculum sessions, right? We have complete control.
Are we doing any standardized testing outside of math to track student progress?
Yes, so three times a year, we do the Star Renaissance Reading Testing, which aligns with our C-CIP goal too, to track reading levels. And we also are giving CBMs every two weeks in our elementary schools for our students who are on reading success plans to progress monitor their growth in reading.
Okay.
Right, and all those that are required their reading assessments to be given. So we're in compliance with the new law that was placed two years ago?
Yes, Senate Bill 681, yep.
Other questions? Alright, well, thank you both.
Thank you.
Like one of you gets to say.
Oh, yes.
Dr. Strunk gets to say because she's our professional development chair.
Okay, well, again, good evening. Again, I'm Carrie Strunk, the lead chair for the District Professional Development Committee. I'm here to highlight our PDC goals and upcoming professional development that we are offering teachers in the district. This slide highlights the 25-26 district PDC representatives from all around the district. As you can see, we have a well-rounded group that come from all buildings and instructional areas to give us a really good perspective of the professional development needs of our staff. Now, it's really small, but we have a lot of ways that we are connected to our district C-CIP goals because all the decisions that come from our district PDC revolve around our district C-CIP goals that you can see here, along with our district PD committee goals that you will see on the next slide. As we stated in the curriculum presentation, a huge responsibility of our team is to make sure that all new and returning teachers to the district are trained and well-prepared for that first day of school. So this list includes a professional development that was offered during the 24-25 school year within the buildings, the summer of 2025, the 2025 new teacher PD, and the 2025 back-to-school PD for all staff. Another important tool that we use to gauge teachers' professional development needs in our district and interests is our PDC survey that we send out every spring. And this survey will allow us to plan accordingly for the next school year and coordinate professional development opportunities for our teachers. And included in this slide and the next slides are the results from the 2025 PDC survey. So based on the survey data gathered from teachers across the district, learning loss and interventions, the science of reading and learning, and behavior management professional development are among the highest suggested topics to consider when planning for the 25-26 professional development calendar. All of these topics suggested by the teachers were considered when planning for this calendar year. So based on the 2025 PDC survey results, here is a list of the upcoming PD that we have coordinated so far for the remainder of the school year for individual buildings and district-wide initiatives. Since we are still in the early stages of planning for the year, building teams will be adding to this list, and our committees will meet monthly to discuss plans for each monthly PD day in the district. Since 2018, the curriculum department has created 12 graduate credit opportunities by partnering with Lindenwood University. In 2023, the District Professional Development Committee approved a tuition reimbursement initiative for teachers in which 10% of our yearly district professional development at the beginning of each school year, at the beginning of each school year, to offer tuition reimbursement for certified staff members who are in the process of degree advancement, specialist certification, and courses to better the quality of their instruction in their classroom. Each reimbursement amount is divided equally among each qualifying teacher with a $500 cap for each submission. This submission is not based on credit hours. In the application process, the teachers just fill out a Google Form application, and they attach their proof of purchase and copy of course transcripts from the past 12 months. Last year, we were able to disburse $7,450 to teachers for reimbursement. We also have created a district PDC website that is a one-stop shop for teachers to visit that include important PDC forums, the professional development calendar, and important PD resources. Any questions about professional development?
I have a quick one maybe for the benefit of the new board members. How often do you conduct professional development days?
Oh, one Monday a month except October and May, yes. Full day Mondays.
Can I go back to the central both situations? In the last presentation, you talked about no more than four teachers at one time. Is that due to the request that we had back a few years ago of taking subs and stuff?
Correct, yeah, yes, correct, it's the sub shortage, yeah.
I just want to make that public, thank you.
Yep, absolutely, thank you, Ms. Barton.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, everyone, thank you, appreciate it.
Wait, who's Principal Gary Brooks, Jerry Brooks?
Oh, Jerry Brooks, okay, I recommend.
So bold.
Yes, this is very exciting, okay? So I recommend you look him up on YouTube.
Okay.
He is administrator, well, former administrator from Kentucky, and he is known nationally for his motivational presentations and, yeah, he's pretty viral. So, yeah, he's coming and he's going to really boost us up in November. So we're also inviting retired teachers from the district to come back and also see Principal Jerry. Yeah, so we're all pretty excited.
And next up, we have our staffing. Dr. Ross gives an update of last year's staffing information.
Yeah, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I'll be presenting the evaluation of our, of last year 24-25 human resources staffing program. C-CIP, we have a new C-CIP rotation, so the goal has changed a little bit. Retain 90% of staff, excluding retirements is something that got added to the new C-CIP. So that's something we'll be taking a look at. The action steps that you see there, they're pretty much the same that we have, that have been a part of the C-CIP. Number one is it's different and it's additional, taking a look to, at the school climate surveys as done by staff throughout the year, making sure that we are focusing on the things that our staff care about and are affecting them in their job. So getting into how we did, what you'll see here, this is certified staff, and this is going to be the hires that we made. So we're right on about, down a couple from previous year. We made 40 certified hires. That number in parentheses, 31, that's going to be new faces that joined our district this year. In that group of 40, 31 are classroom teachers, and you can see the numbers there. It's primarily, or you can see that it leans secondary. That's something I'm going to talk about a little bit more, especially when we get to the administrative side of the house. Something that's going to be, it's something that we're going to look at because while there's certainly going to be things that we are proud of from last year, there's going to be a couple of things we want to focus on, and the administration, especially secondary administration is something that we want to focus on. Okay, so taking a look at the transition for our certified staff from last year, we're right at about that 85% retention rate. Resignations, they're right on par with last year, but what we saw was a real reduction in the number of staff that reported to us anyway that they were leaving to go to another district. So that was significant for us, and that will come up on the next slide, but people weren't leaving, at least teachers were not leaving to go to other schools. And that's been a change, a very positive change. So you can see there's, you know, turnover rate is so nuanced. Like, it's not just one in, one out. Like, we have critical shortage retired teachers that are there, and then sometimes they come back and sometimes they don't. New positions are created, leaps of absence, like, there's so many different things. But, so, yeah, like, all that being said, going into the reasons, oh, excuse me, something worth noting here too, is when we take a look at just teachers only, this is the highest retention rate for classroom teachers that I have been able to report since I've had this job, so within the four years that I've been here. Not monumentally, but it is significant to report that is the highest. Like, we have not achieved 87% since I've been here. So, and it's been ticking up every year as well. So again, things that, things that we are excited about are our ability to retain teachers and the fact that that is increasing. And that kind of shows here, I know some of this language is small, but, and again, I only got 10 responses of everyone that resigned. So, you know, a little less than half of the teachers participated in the exit interview. You'll see the top two reasons there, being the culture and climate of the current workplace and a career change from education. And so it's important to note like that, the culture and climate of the current workplace, it's the first time that that's been one of the top choices, however, because this is only 10 responses, that represents three people. That's on par with what we've had the past two years. So the fact that it's a greater percentage has more to do with the fact that the bottom two categories there, the fact that location of workplace to my home and the salary or other compensation, which are normally our two biggest. We have, in previous years, we have seen teachers leave us because they can find somewhere closer to home that pays more. So the fact that that percentage is higher is more, more a product of the fact that less people left due to somewhere closer to home for more money. So that's what's left. And I would love to be able to report that everyone that left was okay with the situation in their building. You know, we'll always strive for that, but there were three people that reported that it was an issue, which is another reason why we're going to take a look at those climate surveys throughout the course of the year. Looking at administrators, and this is something I mentioned before, we ticked up a little bit, retaining 80%. We had five administrative hires. They were all at the secondary level. You know, our high school principal retired, and then one of our high school APs moved up into that position, but all of the others left, I was able to speak with all of them. And all but one mentioned salary being their big motivator for leaving. And that, I don't know, it probably tends to be more important to administrators. It's part of the reason why you go into administration. But some of them we're going to take a look at, or something to keep an eye on, especially since, again, the fact that they were all secondary, you know, something, something to take note of. Classified staff, this is another bright spot for us. You know, when we take a look at, and again, like, classified staff especially is tricky because some positions will turn over two or three times over the course of the year, like some of our paraprofessional positions, our food service, our bus driver positions especially. And so when we take a look at, again, the 213 certified, our classified staff positions that we had, who started the year and who ended the year, we were able to retain almost 85% of them, which again, is the highest level that we have been at, and with resignations being way down. So again, something that I think we can take a look at and be proud of, that something, we're doing something right, if we're able to retain more and more of our staff each year. So an ongoing need, just something that we track. When the school year started, these are the positions that we have yet to fill, or the current vacancies on our job list. You know, most notably, that stand out there are paraprofessionals. With seven, even though there's been some movement, there's even a couple of paraprofessionals on the personnel sheet for tonight, it'll still be seven after that's approved. It's just something that's been difficult and student need has been increasing. There are, like, we may come to you for additional paraprofessional positions in the near future just because, again, the need continues to grow. And those are tough because those require subs, and so if we can't fill them. And so that puts a strain on our ability to fill classroom positions if we have to fill necessary paraprofessional positions as well. Everything else, custodians are a little bit higher than normal, but that has more to do with the fact that our new director, Mr. Busby, he is taking an approach more similar to food service where he's bringing in subs, and he's working them in different buildings, and then once they find the right fit, he'll move them into a permanent position. So that five's a little bit misleading. We have people that cover the things, but they're just not full-time, so I can't count them. So our action steps, these are similar to what they have been, but I want to approach them differently. So for example, the first one, taking a more active role in recruitment and retention. We perform the exit interviews every year. And every year during our new teacher orientation, I ask all of our new staff, you know, why is it that you chose Warren County? You know, we have, there's no shortage of teacher openings over the state, why us? So trying to understand what we have that attracts staff, but then also, and the part that I think is really missing is, I haven't conducted a stay survey. You know, asking our, especially our certified staff, like, why do you stay? You know, why didn't you pursue a different employment? And so I, understanding that, again, will help us understand better. What are the things we do well, what are the things that are important to our staff? And it's a notable mission, you know, that I'll just have to own, and something that we're going to look to implement. Developing the Grow Your Own Program, that's really starting to take off. We have seven student apprentices that are working in our buildings while they take college classes. So it's really exciting to see how they go. And they've been in the buildings and everything's been going great. Hopefully, we can convince them, as they continue their college education after high school, to continue to work for us as a para and continue to work them that way. We continue to do Pathway for Pairs as well. We've been able to bring in, we'll have one that's graduating in December, and she will be the third that we've been able to utilize that program to take a para to a full-time special education teacher for us. And special education teachers are extremely difficult to find. So that is something that we're very excited about as well. And then, as always, doing everything we can to increase staff salaries. But that's what I have this evening, pending your questions.
So, you know, talking about the administration and trying to figure out those that leave, you know, but I think we're taking a step in the right direction because I think a lot of the, you know, since 1989, sometimes we get administrators here from the east, and they come here to get experience, and they go back east, to where I think some of the hires that we've made here recently are from here, are local, and they're not looking to go east. And I think you're going to see better numbers of retention there anyway, on behalf of that. So, and then it says something about our schools too, that we have a lot of teachers. I mean, you were talking about asking teachers, why do they stay? Same happened to me when the Wentzville started increasing their number of schools. People ask me all the time, why didn't you go to 10, why didn't you do this, why didn't you do that? We need good people too, and I wanted to raise my kids here, so we stayed, sacrificed the $10,000, $15,000 a year at that time to stay, and never have regretted it. And I think we're starting to see things like that too. This is a good place to raise your children, it's a good school. And we have a lot of teachers that are in the Wentzville School District, that their kids take here to go to school anyway, so that's fantastic. And so we just need to encourage those teachers who retired to come back here and teach. So that's here, so, sure, bring them home. But you're doing a great job, and I think that the numbers are showing that, that it's something uptick, and we're doing great things. Thank you for all the time you spent on that.
Appreciate it. On the classified staff portion, how are we paying fairing to the rest of the state?
I mean, it depends on position. So like paraprofessionals, for example, it varies widely. You know, our, especially since we have high-need paraprofessionals and then our access to paraprofessionals, our high-needs paraprofessionals are paid at a much higher level. So we don't see a whole lot of turnover in those. Our regular access to paraprofessionals, in terms of what they make, you know, they start at minimum wage. And so in compared, that's comparable to some districts. Some district, like, the bigger districts just to the east of us, you know, obviously are going to be able to offer more. And so.
Is that where we're seeing that turnover in the paraprofessionals, is they're leaving our district to go?
Not necessarily. There is a whole host of reasons. And really, our flow for how we get some of our paraprofessionals is very interesting to, and it varies by building. Like I say, all of this is so nuanced. Like, for example, we have a building that has a knack of, you know, we'll have permanently assigned substitute teachers in a building. And this principal likes to groom them into being paraprofessionals, you know, and works that train because it works for them. And so in terms of why they go, a lot of times, they're just getting. And so, in terms of why they go, a lot of times they're just getting away from the position. We don't, at least, they don't report to us that, you know, we've accepted a paraprofessional position in a different district, the same way teachers do. And so, I don't know of specific numbers, but it's not reported to us.
And then, you did, you mentioned Pathway to Paraprofessional. What is that?
So, Pathway for Pairs is an alternative certification program run by Missouri State University. So, what that allows is, it's ideally for, because there's a lot of different ways you can become a para. And traditionally, you had to have thirty college credit hours or sixty college credit hours. And this program was meant to be a way for them to finish their bachelor's degree towards education, special education in particular, by allowing them to take online courses and even some classes that we have staff here that teach at a much reduced price. So, it was a cost benefit, a cost benefit to those paras that wanted to become special education teachers to go through that program. So, in about two years, they complete the courses, they continue to work as paraprofessionals, they use some of that experience as a paraprofessional towards all the different, like, observation hours and different things that you have to do as a teaching candidate, and then they graduate. And so, then they become certified teachers while they're being paras.
So, are they paras before they start this program?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's traditionally not meant for the candidate that has no college credits. But that is a growing number of our paras as a subcer can qualify you to be a para, which is just an online training.
So, are the paras who have the certification? That have the thirty credit hour, is that what you said?
Yeah, I missed, it was supposed to be sixty, yeah.
Sixty. Are they paid at a different rate than the ones who just have it online, or they all come and have minimum wage?
If they're in access, so our two price points are access to or high needs. So, high needs is dedicated to a singular student. They typically have job duties that may include feeding or if they have apparatus like a wheelchair or, you know, different, there's different levels of, you know, duties that they're asked to do.
Okay.
I was going to call out one thing, before you go, it's positive though. You've kind of downplayed the retention rates, not changing a whole lot, or minimally. But the one thing that stuck out to me on both certified and, yeah, classified. Resignations are down almost fifty percent in the last two years in both of those categories. So, I think that speaks volumes about things are headed in the right direction, more so probably than overall retention rate too. Things are going well there, it's good to see.
Yeah, we have a very strong core of people that are passionate about Warren County R3, that is for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. Last of the superintendent reports is the financial update.
Okay, this is just our normal monthly financial update, just kind of let us know where we are, just kind of keeps us up to date. So, revenues this year, right now is a little bit down. And that's mainly because last year we got a double payment, early childhood special education payment in July. So, I was going to throw that off a little bit, because the year before that, they didn't have the money to pay us, so they had to pay us the next year. So, so that's just kind of throws off things just slightly. But our fund balances are pretty close, thirty-five. We knew we were going to start the year a little bit lower than last year because expenses are up this year because we did give raises and that sort of thing to meet the requirements of newly passed Proposition A and the new baseline teacher salary. So, we'll kind of keep along. So, this is just our chart, our operational fund balance. The orange line is this year, so we're again just kind of trending behind, but looks to be on the same trajectory as last year. And then, so August year-to-date revenue compared to last year, so locals almost exactly the same. County's down a couple hundred bucks. State is down about a million. Again, that was the million-dollar double payment ECSE. And then, federal is up a little bit, that's just timing of getting payments. So, we're right there on the revenue side. Expenses, so salaries are trending up, so we did give raises a little bit, benefits went up slightly, so we've seen a little increase there. Purchase services are increasing a little bit for special education services. But supplies, we don't have as, not as big a purchasing year, so we're going to be down in supplies this year for things. So, we're actually spending about, oh, ninety thousand or so less than what we did last year at this point. So, that's good. So, fund balance on capital projects, we're at one-point-nine million for projects we need to do around the district. And bond issue, so we have spent nine-point-five million, and so our ending fund balance of cash on hand for the bond issues, twenty-one million. Now, the contingency, we have starting balance of five-hundred thousand, so we've had seven-hundred, seventy-seven thousand in change orders, and so we're at four-hundred-twenty-two still left in that balance for that. Now, we have a small change order we're talking about tonight, so that'll drop slightly, and it's not included in that. That's the finances.
Thank you. Any questions on the superintendent reports, financial updates? All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, so entertain a motion to move forward there.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'm going to call an audible and do a roll call though, because we have a couple of special circumstances here. So, we'll start with Rich.
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Deanna?
I, except for the eighteen minutes, I need to abstain.
And I vote aye, abstaining also from the eighteen minutes. Consent agenda passes. All right, moving on to old business, we have three policy approvals that were first reads at the last meeting.
Right, these are all MSBA recommendations. The one about board members, you, the new recommendation for the policy is if you're convicted of an assault in the first or second degree, you're prohibited from running for the board, so don't do that. The other one's homeschooling, there's a new kind of language that's being used, it's called family-paced education. And so, that's just being added to the policy to be current, of the current language. And then, virtual students are now required to have due process whenever they receive disciplinary issues.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions on the policy approvals in front of us tonight? All right, I would entertain a motion. Do we need a motion on that?
Yep, sorry, I forgot to put that on, just a motion to approve as presented.
Make a motion to approve the policy approvals that the board association recommends?
Also.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve all three of the policy improvements or additions as presented. All those in favor, I guess, is there any additional discussion or questions before we vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, policy's approved. Moving on to new business, we have a couple of different contracts that we need to discuss for new business, I guess.
Yep, so the first one is a telehealth service agreement. I'll try to turn this over to Dr. Ross, but this will allow mental health access for students and staff and it's through our health and current health insurance program and no cost to the district on this, so it seems like a pretty good deal. Dr. Ross, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, so it's very similar to what our employees are able to utilize now through our insurance, where they get a certain number of telehealth phone calls per incident, you know, for mental health. So, this actually expands it to our entire student body. So, if we have parents that have concerns, you know, if we receive like an alert that a student has done something or searched something concerning on the internet, now we have a resource that we can correct parents to. And this, this opportunity comes fully funded through an outside agency, and so, it's great.
That's awesome, that's good. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement as presented. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for telehealth services as presented. Any further questions or discussion?
I actually did have a question. So, you said it's being funded from an outside party? Who is that outside party?
I don't know offhand. I would, I would need to look it up.
Is it just through OSBA?
No, it's, we filled out a form to request that they located funding for it. There are a number of districts participating in this as well. The actual grant or whatever that they secured or paid for them, I do not know.
We're using a grant for this?
We are not. So, we, what we did was, so this, we submitted an application saying that we are willing to use this if it is able to be free, basically. And so, we signed a form that authorized them to try to obtain funding on our behalf. And so, they did that, so we didn't actually apply for any grants or anything, funding sources external to...
I'm reading through the agreement, trying to find it, but I don't see it there.
Right, so OSBA, so OSBA, which is our health insurance company, secured all the funding and notified us they had funding to be able to provide this service. Right. But Dr. Ross is also on the board of OSBA, and I'm sure he can find all that information if needed.
Any further questions or conversation? All right, we move forward with a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Next new business item is change order number four.
Yep, we have a small change order here for a change in the door size for the new building. As in the mechanical room, as they were putting the, looking at how big the parts are, they thought, whoa, we need to get these parts out of the building. And the original door that they had was too small to get the parts out. So, they needed to do a change now before the building gets built to have a little larger door to get the parts out. So, we're not, we're not in a real problem down the road.
Probably cheaper to change the door now.
Right, right.
I'll make a motion to approve the change orders presented.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Rich. Thank you, Stephanie. Motion and a second to approve the change order as presented. Any further discussion or questions on that motion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And number three, special education assessment contracts.
Yeah, so we're, our special education, when a parent asks to, you know, test their student for special education services, they have to do a number of tests for those, a number of assessments to see if students qualify. And special education would like to switch to this platform because this will automatically update with new assessments that are coming. So, currently, we have to buy new every time the new comes out. So, this, we believe we actually potentially might save some money in the long run. It'll be close, but we do think this will be either cost neutral or even save some money by using this platform.
Any questions or discussion on special ed contracts? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contracts as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Deanna, thank you, Keith. A motion and a second to approve the contracts as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion is also approved. All right, last of the new business is the Q verse translation services.
Yeah, so this year we've seen an increase in families that need translation services. So, families that have English as a second language, we've seen about a fifty percent increase that speaks English outside the home, or, sorry, speaking languages not English in their homes. So, because of that, we've had a lot of people come to us that don't speak English, and we need some translation services. So, our current staff that do speak Spanish is mainly the language that needs translation. We're just, they can't keep up. So, we need a little help. We do have some other companies that we use, but this is just being an additional company that would be available to us to help with our translation services.
Any questions or...
How many ELO positions do we currently have?
Let's see, we have a director, coordinator, para, and that's it. That's it, that's it.
Three. And how many would we need to add to more?
Well, right now, we're looking at to contract some additional services, but next school year, we'll probably need to add another teacher. But this year, we're trying to just piece it together, kind of get through the year. And then, post it in normal timing, to try to get the best candidates.
I'll make a motion to approve contract as presented. Q verse, Rich?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the contract as presented with Q verse translation services. Any further questions or conversation? I guess I do have one question. Can you remind us again that this is, this is not an exclusive contract?
Correct, correct.
This is just open?
This would be, you know, there are other translation companies out there, but this would be one that we could call. It's a local person that lives here in town that could help us out. But there are other translation services that say they're not available or something that ever can do a different language that's other than Spanish. You know, let's say we get something from Russia or wherever. And so, this would just be mainly for our Spanish translations.
I just wanted to call that out.
Yes.
Was it exclusive?
It's not exclusive, right.
All right. Any other questions, otherwise we can move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the contract as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We do not have any policy first reads for next month, so we can move on to miscellaneous and start off with any celebrations that the board would like to bring forward.
Well, I'm going to start tonight with the soccer program. Sometimes they don't get a lot of shout-outs, but first of all, Coach John Schultz here and Coach Jake Brown. Started their sixteen season this year together as a head coach and assistant coach in that program. And that is, that's remarkable when you think about coaching, longevity, and they do a great job. And this year, the varsity soccer team ran the record tonight to five and oh with the victory over Gateway. And they're in the tournament, they'll play for the championship at eleven-thirty Saturday morning against Wright City, in Wright City, the championship of that tournament. They beat, the JV is also undefeated, they're two over them.
They lost tonight.
Oh, yeah. So, now, they're two one and one. Still, that's good. So, that's good that we have, you know, there have been years where we couldn't field a full JV team, and so, it seems like they got the program even on a nut tip right there with that. And we got the leading scorer in San Luis area playing for the varsity, Isaac Wagner, like, give him a shout-out. He's the leading scorer, I know they're, and I had seven goals in one game. Tonight, they won seven to nothing over Gateway Alabama, and he scored that, he is the leading scorer. And the goalie's name, I got to give it to you guys, because I don't know the man, but I wanted to make sure. We have only given up one goal at the varsity level for the whole season, and his name is Riley Mee. Has given up one goal, and he doesn't do that without the defensive running. So, just call around, great job by varsity program and JV, and congratulations to Coach Schultz, Coach Brown, and all the coaches there. Big shout-out.
Any others? I have one just because it's fresh off the, off of the text. The Black Hawk Middle School seven-three football team won their game in Union tonight, so, either he's playing right now?
Great game.
All right.
Big shout-out to Miles Bings, that's the quarterback in his thirteen, I'll bet. Yeah, that's exciting.
Good times. All right, so workshop topics for September twenty-fifth. I know we have some things to talk through on the new Daniel Bayon building.
Yeah, we have a couple items that we'll need to work through at that time, but that's the one thing I have.
Okay. Are there others that anybody can think of tonight? We have time to add if we need to, but that's one for sure. All right. That's September twenty-fifth. September twenty-fifth is...
Five o'clock.
Yep, five o'clock. As long as five o'clock works for me. That's what we typically have then, so. All right. We're nearing the end of the agenda here. Anybody want to make a motion to set the next regular meeting?
I'll make a motion to set the next regular Board of Education meeting for October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Deanna?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set the next regular Board of Education meeting for October ninth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, the next regular meeting is set. I have a motion for the next closed session.
I will make a motion for the next closed session to immediately proceed the open session on October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
I guess we're waiting up somebody for that, aren't we?
I don't make motions for, we're running a small period, there's only twenty seconds. Motion and second to set the next closed session to immediately proceed the open session on October ninth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Closed session is set for October ninth. Last item of business.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, same sign? We are adjourned.